Thanks. Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order. People should know, we do not have a quorum. We have five members present, so we won't be voting on anything this evening because we need six to have a quorum. But we do have information that there are people here to give us some information, and the town manager will give some information, as will I and any other councillors who want to, but we won't be voting on anything this evening. So, I am going to ask the clerk, would you do roll call?
Oh, sure, we'll call. We have councillor Antipas, councillor Barber, councillor Maravzik, councillor Morton, and councillor, yourself, the mayor, Flax. So absent is councillor Grimm, councillor Perezati, councillor Nault, and councillor Watson. But I believe they all said that they weren't going to be here, is that true?
Say again?
They all notified someone that they weren't going to be here.
They did.
Yep.
I didn't put two and two together, or four and five together.
It's okay.
So, Ron, could you lead us in the flag? The pledge allegiance to the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There is a recognition and proclamation recognizing Constitution Week. Councillor Barber, would you mind reading it?
Sure. What's that? Proclamation. Whereas September 17, 2017 marks the 230th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting in proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas it is fitting in proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, and whereas this year the President of the United States of America has designated September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council and the Town of Groton does hereby encourage the citizens of Groton to reaffirm the principles and ethics that the framers of the Constitution had intended in 1787, and duly proclaim the week of September 17 through the 23rd to be Constitution Week, dated Groton, Connecticut, the 17th day of September 2017.
Thank you councillor. Receipt of citizens' petitions. This is the portion of the council agenda where the council welcomes comments from citizens. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentations should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Town councillors will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and can respond during their responses to citizens' petitions portion of the Town Council meeting. Citizens should make their presentation from the lectern and state their name and address for the record, and we have one person signed up, Ron Yuhas.
Hi, Ron Yuhas, 91 South Road. I'll just address the council as the president of Quantic Bridge Fire District. One thing I'd like to discuss, I know that you haven't received your pilot money from the state. However, when the pilot money is issued to us, half of it is from the town. Are we going to be receiving that $77,275? Or is that going to be on hold until the state money comes through? Because Mark has always told us that that $77,000, half of that is from the town for our payment for our district in lieu of taxes. So that's something that the council's going to, you know, if you never, if the state doesn't give you any pilot money, are we going to get pilot money for taking care of the town I heard, and I'm not positive, that the council did not want the fire districts to come before the council to receive the pilot money, like we had done in the last three or four years. Even if there is no pilot money, I think it's good that each district meet with the council and maybe submit the budget from this year and the previous years, because long term, if we start with any consolidation, it's going to be with the fire districts, and the council should be paying attention, I think, to what's going on, and how much it's costing us now for fire protection in this town with all these districts and all this equipment. So I'd like, I'd like the council, if they have time to, and certainly our district would like to meet with the council. But I think that all the fire districts should, because it's still taxpayer money, one way or another. And, you know, at the meetings, you get very limited, we were lucky to have 10 people. When there's no problems in the district, everybody's happy, you set the mill rate and go away. But I think the council, if they kind of got the information together and had it available for anybody that wanted it, or other districts, and to see what our long-term goal is going to be for all these fire districts, I mean, we can't sustain forever and ever with the districts the way they are. So, that's just my thought on that, and the pilot money were the only two real issues I have with the, you know, as far as the fire department stuff. We're rolling along fine, and everything's good right now, so we'll hope it stays that way. But I guess the council will have to decide on what to do with that town pilot money, if there's going to be money for us or not, because that's, you know, was from the town's point of view, that they're helping. And I guess it would be all of the pilot money that you, to all the districts, is funded for town pilot. So whether you're going to fund that, whether we get no pilot money or not, and I guess, you know, over the next month or two, it'd be good that we had some kind of decision, because, you know, that's a big chunk of our budget, you know? The total was $154, and half of it is the $77,000, so. John, did you have any thoughts on that at all, or am I allowed to ask that?
Sure, I'm allowed to ask whatever you want. You know, I'm hoping we're going to know, and we're going to give an update on our meeting with the governor today, and, you know, wasn't overly hopeful from the meeting. So, I'm hoping that close to October 1st, we'll know something on what's going to happen with the budget. I think we certainly will have an answer in the next month, so.
Well, and I, again, it's whether, whether you get the pilot money or not, does that make a difference as to whether we get the town pilot money? Because we're taking care of a lot of town property, et cetera, in our district, so, you know, I'm just looking out for our districts, and, you know, try and keep it financially above the water, so.
And there are several agencies we haven't transferred money to, because we, if we got hit for millions more than we, I think, and we have to look at it all at once.
No, I do understand, but from our point, and I know you've got a bigger problem, but from the district's point of view, we'd like to know what money's coming in, you know, and how we can try and cut and save if we're not going to get any of that $150, or part of it, or however we're going to do it, so.
I really do think we'll have an answer in the next month or so.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Ron. Response to citizens' petitions?
I just.
Sorry, very briefly. The, as I recall, the concept of bringing in the fire districts, that was started in the '09-11 council. The idea was, this was in the wake of being able to discuss or not discuss, or get all the fire districts, either the presidents or the chiefs, together in one room, that sort of thing. So, somebody came up with the notion, well, we hand out the checks every year to the fire districts, they're portioned under the formula that we have for the pilot money, why don't we simply make an occasion of it, we'll bring them to the fire districts, you know, one by one, whenever they can make it to a meeting, and we'll have a chat? And I think the sense was, maybe not with all the districts, but we felt it with some of the districts, I think, and some of the councillors began to feel that after you've gone through several cycles of sort of similar recitations, which is, hey, how's your department structured, and how's it going, what do you foresee long-term and all of that, it began to feel a little stale. So there was, there was some discussion, I don't know that we officially decided to can, to practice, but I think there was some discussion about, should we just sort of put an end to it? You'd still get the pilot money under, you know, in normal years and all that, we're not going to get into that. But, you know, the practice of bringing you in as though somehow you don't get the check unless you, you know, you come in first kind of thing, that was never the intent.
No.
And maybe there was a feeling of, you know, we sort of heard it, and you're always invited to come in and talk, but, and that's why, we didn't want to put a negative, you know, we didn't want to talk to the fire districts, it wasn't about that at all, it was just sort of.
No, I agree, and we were in bad shape in 2009, things were not good in our district.
Yeah, in terms of discussion, I think Quantic Bridge is probably the sexier district, if you will allow me to use that phrase, but, yeah, but that's, that's the only reason why there was a discussion, kind of.
Well, I just think that it might be in best interest of the town people to figure out what it's costing to protect. And I know they did a study a while back before I was involved, and it was about this thing, and, you know, it's always the consolidation, and how we can do this and that. But we're in a situation where we've got to start saving some money, anywhere we can in the town, so.
Diane?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that if I was in your shoes, I'd be up here asking the same thing. Unfortunately, we don't have an answer for you right now. Thank Governor Malloy, everything's a big question mark right now, so I hope to have an answer for you soon.
Yeah, well, I understand that completely, and I'm just trying.
I understand.
Look out for the district, and to see if the town is going to, if they got nothing from the state, are they going to still put in their share? And I know it's something that might take a little while, but I guess I'm trying to make you aware, that's all.
We understand, I just, we just don't know. So, thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, we have an update on the AOPA flying in the.
Oh, right.
Hi, Ron Zedson.
Little Warford. John Bird asked me to come up and talk to you guys a little bit about the AOPA flying, and for the record, John, thanks for your support and enthusiasm. It's really been good. So, so we're having a fly-in in Groton, October 6 and 7. It's sponsored by an organization called the AOPA Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association. It's a pretty competitive thing, there's four of them a year, all over the country. You have to write a proposal to get it, because there's some pretty significant economic benefit to the host community, which is us. I'm the chairman of this event, my tact was a little different, I think, to my competitors in that I felt that this area has a lot to offer, and I want to get people to come in here, not for the airport, but for the area. The long-term goal being that this isn't just going to be a one-and-done, want people to fly in, check out the airport, go to the event, and see all the other stuff that we've got going on. So our proposal was very heavy on what we have to offer. Sue Bailey, Peggy Roberts, were both very, very actively involved, they were a big help. Tom Dunn, the FBO of Mystic Jet, and Kurt Sendline, the airport manager, my co-conspirators, if you will. So, anyway, so, we won, we got a proposal, and we got an event, it's going to be October 6 and 7. Couple of details, this, this is not an airshow, so there's not going to be the Blue Angels, this is really focused on aircraft owners and pilots. So to that end, there's going to be two days' worth of safety seminars, training sessions, there's going to be 70 or 80 aircraft vendors, including aircraft manufacturers, Piper, Cessna, Beechcraft, Textron, so on and so forth, TBM. Couple more details, so October 6 and 7, expect, I'd be disappointed if we have less than 600 airplanes flying in.
Nice.
600 airplanes.
Wow.
Probably 1,000 to 1,500 cars. Again, I'd be disappointed if we didn't get 6,000 attendees. If you go on the website, aopa.org, and then go to community, and then go to fly-in, you'll see the Groton Kagon, it's Kagon 2017, that's our title. There's a lot in there about our local area, I think there's like the top 15 things to do in the area. Everything from the water taxi, to the seaport, to the submarine museum, to the museums, the art museums, it's very, very comprehensive, and really, really good. My hat's off again to Sue and Peggy for putting that together. In terms of some of the impacts, I've got about 300 hotel rooms blocked. I know the AOPA has already rented 60 rooms in addition to that, plus the rental cars, the restaurants, the food service people are going to spend about $40,000 buying local food. There's, it's a pretty significant impact, but again, I'd be very disappointed if they all show up and never came back. That's not my vision. So I thank you for what you've done, we've gotten some good stuff from you guys, it's free to the public, by the way, there's no charge, it's going to be a pretty good time.
How about helicopter rides?
There's going to be two helicopters here, the TASM G, but there probably won't be any helicopter rides. With trying to land 600 to 800 airplanes.
Wow, that's amazing.
It's going to be a monumental undertaking, but we've got it under control, we're with the FAA, NTSB, and we've got, everybody's engaged.
Nice.
How's your volunteer situation, are you?
That's a really good question. The way it works is AOPA, all the volunteers apply directly through the website to AOPA. So on my team, I've got about 15, what I'll call department heads, one of them is a volunteer coordinator, actually, there's two of them. And so all we do is we kind of canvass the local community and push them to get on the website. But if you, if you have some other civic groups, more's better. We're looking for about 300 volunteers.
Wow.
I mean, just parking cars, and if we're going to be parking airplanes, you have to be a pilot, but I mean, there's just a lot to do. So I think you've got my contact info, right?
Yes.
I have a card if you want it, one cardlet.
Okay.
So, yeah, anything you can do. Traffic perspective, I know the Groton Festival, the Fall Festival, I think, is that same weekend, but if your GPS directions, they're going to come, if they're coming from the east, excuse me, yeah, coming from the east, they're going to come right down 117 and turn right to the airport, so I don't think there's going to be a conflict there.
If you could send me an official request for volunteers, I could put it in our weekly newsletter, just to get that out to the public.
Sure, absolutely, do that, that's a good idea.
Are there any, like, dignitaries coming, or, like, dignitaries, or, like, I know a lot of, you know, well-off people fly, are there going to be, you know, is there any?
The president may exclude.
We're not that big of a.
Yeah, I don't think so. I mean, the president of AOPA is coming, AOPA's got about 350,000 members worldwide.
Nice.
So he gives a speech, it's Ice Cream Social, on Saturday, Saturday afternoon, but I think that's probably it.
And everything's taking place at the airport?
Everything's taking place at the airport, we've got Survival Systems is doing a special one-day seminar, right across the street from the airport. The TASM G is going to be giving tours, so there'll be some stuff right in the immediate vicinity. But Mystic Jet, Tom Dunn, has given us full use of two huge hangars.
Nice.
We'll have the party in one, we'll have all the vendors in the other one. So the short answer is yes, everything's happening at the airport, right around the airport.
Well, we appreciate you coming in to film us in.
Appreciate the help, hopefully this will be good for our area.
Thank you.
Thank you. I hope it becomes a yearly event.
I'll send that to you.
Thank you.
Dean?
I'm looking at their map, they have four of these events in the country, we're one of the four.
Hey, that's what he just said.
He did say that?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm too busy reading, listen, sorry.
All right.
Beer's ready.
Dean?
If I had that microphone, I could be renting out like.
Thank you. So I can count on your support.
Is there any other response to, Ron?
No.
Okay. So we're going to skip the consent calendar.
Yeah.
And go to communications and reports. Rich?
Nothing to report.
Dean?
Rest in peace, Walter Becker, nothing to report.
Karen?
Yes, I wanted to report that I attended the TIF Advisory Board Meeting that was held last week. We worked on the finalizing the draft of the financing policy for a tax incentive program, and the next step then, once we get that all finalized, will be to start working on the master plan, so that's coming along, and should have something soon, you know, within a reasonable amount of time for the council to take a look at.
Exciting.
It is, very.
Diane?
I report I had a great vacation, so I have nothing to report.
Thanks. So, I wanted to report on John and Keith Hedrick, the mayor of the city of Groton, and the superintendent Mike Grenier, and Kim Watson, the board of ed chair, had a meeting today with Governor Malloy at 12:30 at the Capitol. And it was, I'm going to read a little bit from this press release, because I think it sums up pretty well what took place. Groton Municipal and Education officials met with Connecticut Governor Dan O.P. Malloy today regarding the status of the state budget, and to stress the devastating impact that proposed drastic cuts outlined in the governor's executive order will have on the education of Groton's children. The message from the governor, urge your state lawmakers to pass a budget that restores fair funding to all school districts. We spoke face-to-face with him, and spent a little bit over half an hour there. During the meeting, we provided facts and figures addressing discrepancies with state figures relative to the district's enrollment, town need, and wealth. We're facing a $17.5 million cut in education funding if, in lieu of a state budget, the governor's executive order goes into effect on October 1st. The governor confirmed the massive proposed cuts, and encouraged local leaders and citizens to talk to legislative leaders and encourage them to pass a budget which would restore fair funding to the schools, and protect the educational opportunities for the children. And what we want to stress to everybody is, we want people, everybody, to call your, the state legislative leaders, and tell them to restore education aid to Groton, and then pass a budget. We don't want to encourage them to just pass a budget, we need, we need our education aid restored. And I am going to give you the people's names and their phone numbers that you should call, people should call them a lot, and urge them to restore our, our aid, and to pass a budget by October 1st. Senator Martin Mooney, 1-800-842-1420. Senator Len Fasano, 1-800-842-1421. Representative Joe Erasimowitz, 1-800-842-8267. And Representative Themis Choridis, 1-800-842-1423. We can't, can't stress enough that they're, they're not passing a budget. Any, any budget cannot get to the floor unless Senator Mooney and Senator Fasano.
Yes.
Sign off on it. So, that's because they're in special session. So, everyone who went to the meeting, and even the governor was saying, we need to urge our state legislative leaders to get to work and pass a budget. So, that was, in a nutshell, was very, he was very cordial, we had some discussion about some of the numbers, and he was using the equalized grand list to compare Groton to other municipalities, and really couldn't tell us what the formula was to get to the equalized grand list, and was also reviewing some of the numbers, people, populations of towns and cities in relation to the population of the number of students in their district, and how that compared to Groton. We were also joined at the table with, by, it was, I have it here, the secretary.
Office of Management and Budget Director.
Barnes, Ben Barnes, who was kind of the, some of the numbers that we were asking about, he was there to answer for. So, as I said, we didn't get a lot of valuable information, but he definitely heard, he said he, he likes Groton, and he knows that we have some, some points to be made, and he's looking, and, but it always came back to urge your state legislators to pass, to, you know, to pass the budget, we're saying to give us back our state aid and then pass a budget.
Bruce, can you give us those numbers and names in an email, and maybe send it to the Board of Education and all the RTM members?
Absolutely.
So that we all get involved?
Yep, yep. So, we will do that. John, anything to add?
No, I think you've covered it pretty well. I did send out an email earlier today to the council members with the materials we presented today, just so you know what we covered. I didn't feel a lot of sympathy from them, really.
Yeah.
For us. I didn't feel a lot of sympathy from the governor for us, really, he was a bit flipping on a few things, and, but I think we need to work hard at swaying our legislators.
Yep. That's all I have.
I think it's funny that the gun being pointed at us, and he's talking about, is his gun.
Yes.
Talk to the legislature before I do something drastic.
Well, and he, he mentioned several times that he was making these brash cuts to encourage the legislators to move before that became the budget on October 1st, so.
Yeah, I think.
Clerk of the RTM?
Thank you. Mayor, the RTM will be meeting, they didn't, they met last, last month, but they didn't have a quorum, so they just really used it as an informational meeting, which is what you're doing.
Which like we're doing.
Yes, it works. So they will be meeting on September 13th at 7:30 at the Groton Senior Center, and the order of business that they have is to discuss the possible changes to their rules and regulations for their body. Specifically, their, Representative McDermott would like to look at abstaining from votes that you may benefit from, so this is an ongoing question for many bodies, so.
What a coincidence.
And they also will be, well, they won't be discussing anything, because it's not going to happen tonight, never mind, that's it.
Clerk of the council?
The only thing I had to bring to you, and you may have received it, was a, a letter from Mr. Ed Johnson regarding parking problems in Noah, Ford Lobster, I don't know if that's what they call it, anyway, the restaurant on Riverview Avenue, is very popular, and, you know, summertime brings holiday, especially a holiday weekend, brings an influx, and I don't know if it's something that the traffic authority wants to visit again, I know that they have once, so.
I think the town manager.
The chief is looking into it and addressing it, yeah.
What are you going to do, right?
Yeah.
It's the same thing with windows being open and noise being heard, you know?
Our dispatch center, though, doesn't have, they looked back for, through the summer to see how many complaints they had regarding parking there, and they didn't have any from the summer, so, though apparently there's, there's calls just vaguely, but no regular, I think maybe, no, they have one complaint about cars parked on both sides of the road, that's the only complaint they had for that area for the whole summer. And, but anytime the police get called on any of those issues, the public should certainly call the police, and they will go address it, so.
Okay. That it?
That's all I have for you.
Thank you. Town manager?
We have a invite to a ribbon-cutting ceremony from Groton Utilities for the new solar farms, and I think probably everybody's seen those coming up, they're in three different parks. The ceremony will be Thursday, September 21st, at Polaris Park at 11:00 a.m. The other two farm sites are Trident Park and Pelican Park. There'll be several speakers there, Captain White's Carver, let's see, Keith Hedrick will be there, and Belfour Beatty will have some representatives there, but, pretty big project, so, everybody's invited to that. Mayor Flax and I were invited to a, this Friday, Rear Admiral Rendon invited us to attend a pre-reception and Corps of Cadets Regiment Review on Friday. Neither of us are available, and they extended the offer to if any.
Yeah, I forgot.
Someone was interested in going, that's at 3:15 p.m. at the, at the Coast Guard Academy there, and then it'll be the, going right into the regimental review, so that's 3:15. If you are interested in going, let me know, so I can let them know to expect you.
I did talk to Karen about it, and Karen's in.
Yeah, okay, I'll, you want me to email?
Sure.
Okay. And then, just right when I, before I came in here, I got the first draft of the retirement presentation, so we'll be reviewing that over the next few days, and.
Very nice.
So, it's coming along. That's all I have, and then I brought John, and one of the things I want to talk to you about is changing our rules, so I can maybe add a department head update under this list, so I have a little flexibility. I'd like to get more department heads in giving updates to the council, so maybe we could change that in the rules, to put a spot on.
Dean?
Oh, sure, I'll convene with, with Harry and who else is on, Harry and Greg, my rules committee, thank you.
John's awesome. And I'd like to make sure economic development, as well as others, but economic development especially, get in every month, at least one time to update the council on projects.
Hi, John.
Good evening, John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development. Before, I wanted to give the council an update on some of the things happening in both planning, or all three, planning, economic development, as well as building and under construction. If you drive around town, you'll see there is quite a bit under construction on the commercial end, but one thing I wanted to point out, to each council member, I handed out two folders like this, so sometimes people wonder, what are we doing from an economic development or marketing perspective? So one of the folders that we handed out is full of material detailing some So, one of the folders that we handed out is full of material detailing some of our marketing initiatives for our public properties that are for sale. For example, Mystic Education Center, some of the different flyers that we're handing out, some of the hard copies that we're handing out to people, as well as things that we email off to prospective developers. So, we've communicated via email and/or phone with well over 50 developers that are interested in the Mystic Education Center. They're looking for what type of information, what survey, like property survey, environmental information, building designs, what is the town trying to do with the property? So, we create these marketing materials showing pictures, trying to create interest within the property. And for that property in particular, we'll be issuing an RFP this fall, probably for a period of two to two and a half months. Now that we've developed so much interest from all these developers in that property, we expect to have a much bigger pool of folks interested, so we'll get better proposals, so we'll get that really good end use for the property. The town has been talking about working with the state for 10-plus years, maybe 20 years, on the Mystic Ed Center. In a short while, we've looked at, "How can we market the property in a good way, build up some good interest?" If you drive by the property, you'll see that there's "For Sale" signs out in front there that we've put up. So, those are just some of the things on one property in particular. Newspaper articles that have featured the property. And the same thing would go for some of the other properties that we're working on. Gold Star Highway, which we had issued an RFQ about a year ago. We're actually working with the developer right now. We expect to be coming to talk to the council sometime later this month in executive session about that property. The Sealy School, which is not one of our highest priority properties, Mystic Ed Center, Gold Star Highway and Groton Heights are kind of our top three that we've been working on, trying to move those forward. Sealy comes in number four. There's a "For Sale" sign on that. We have marketing promotional materials out on the street for that. So, these are some of the efforts that we're working on from a medium-to-long-term perspective, from a public property marketing, as far as our economic development initiatives. In addition to that, looking at just marketing the town in general, some of our incentives. So, I think the council may have seen before, our incentives brochure that we've put together for about a year, we've been working on a guidebook called Doing Business in Groton. This will be a roadmap for existing and new businesses, developers trying to make things happen, developing Groton. We should be done with this guide sometime in the next week or two. That's something really big for us. We're modeling that off of a guide that was done about a year, year and a half ago in Norwich. Different small business financing seminars, trying to get the word out, so letting people know how they can borrow money easier to start up their businesses, and a number of different things along those lines. I encourage council members, flip through the packet, see some of the information that we're creating. This is also the information that'll end up populating, or part of the information that'll end up populating the economic development website that we've been talking about for a while. We got the funding for it. That site is under construction now, and we expect that to be operational sometime in the middle of next, towards the end of next month in October. So, that's something that's really exciting for us. A lot of our promotional and marketing materials, we'll keep pushing out to the web, constantly updating it, not just with static materials like this, but also promotional videos. So, just in the past couple of weeks, working through the Aviation Day, that was at the, done at the airport, we actually worked with a helicopter vendor and had some flyovers done of Groton to create some promotional videos showing off Groton. So, working with the staff at our library, we have a really great crew there with the audio visual. So, that's something else that we're working on. So, those are some of the, the bigger picture items on just one facet of things that we're doing from a marketing and promotional perspective. Before I move on to some of the other things, any questions just on that? Okay, good. So, again, if you have any questions on that afterwards, after you look through this packet, feel free to reach out to John. He's been aware of a lot of the work we're doing, or myself, or Paige, involved in the day-to-day on these types of things. From a construction standpoint, as I said, if you drive around town, a lot of things are happening within our Inspection Services Department. So, a number of projects that have been completed just in the last few months. I know a couple of us had gone to the ribbon-cutting over at the Savings Institute Bank. There's also Walmart recently finished some interior renovations. Gabriel's Karate, you'd heard that they were doing apartments above. They just finished four more apartments on the first floor of their building. Barley Head Brewery over on Water Street in Mystic is completed. Drubridge 24 finished up this summer. It's a small sandwich shop also, right on West Main Street. Pet Smart on Long Hill Road relocated, that's complete. Mint Leaf, a new restaurant over in the Bennys Plaza, recently just completed and opened up. Dunkin' Donuts on Paquonic Road, there were some interior renovations. T-Mobile on Long Hill Road relocated. KFC did a big renovation on their property over on Route 12. Oleo's added a new enclosed patio. Argia Cruises moved their main offices over to 39 and 41 West Main Street. Andrea Byrd Bridal Salon opened up on Water Street, as well as Friar Tux Tavern on 15 Water Street. That's a new restaurant. I don't know if any council members saw it, but there was just an article over the weekend in the Boston Globe about Mystic being this new hub for foodies and restaurants. So, that's something we're really seeing take off. And we've actually met with a number of other folks talking about opening more restaurants in Groton, such as a Asian restaurant and adding outdoor seating in one of the restaurant that wants to locate on Bank Street, which is actually, they're asking for a zone change on that property. That's gonna be before the zoning commission tomorrow night. So, those are some of the things that had been completed just in the last few months. A number of projects under construction, Planet Fitness on Long Hill Road, about an 8,000-square-foot addition. And if you've seen, they're actually doing a complete facade improvements on the whole plaza. They finished all these just a few months ago, and the whole plaza has really taken a turn for positive improvements. We're hoping that, once this one is completed, we'll start seeing other plazas in that vicinity start reinvesting into their properties. Groton Multi-Family Apartments over on Pleasant Valley Road and Route 12, they just started construction on 147-unit apartment complex. Colonel Ledyard Estates on Colonel Ledyard Highway, 15 single-family lots, those are under construction for single-family homes. The Hampton Inn over on Long Hill Road is redoing their facade as we speak. The U-Haul Condition Self-Storage is almost done over on Gold Star Highway. That was a little over 90,000 square feet of construction, quite an operation there. Long Metal Landings on South Road, 22 apartments under construction. Office space on Gold Star Highway, the old Grossman Seafood is under construction. The Fieldcrest Water Storage Tank is under construction. Central Hall, we saw construction happening there during the fall, sorry, during the spring. We do have building plans in now that are under review to finish the construction of that building. Chelsea Groton Bank on Gold Star Highway is doing some renovations. Mr. River Ambulance, Mattress Firm on Long Hill Road. Ju Sushi, which used to be where the bank is, where the Saving Institute Bank now is, is building a new restaurant across the street. Bow Wow's Bluff Point Dog Wash and Retail over on Fort Hill Road is under construction, and a new building is under construction at the Mystic Business Park on Flanders Road. In addition to that, we've been meeting with a lot of developers. I could go through Four Winds at Mystic, micro-apartments. There's a lot of things happening within the planning, economic, and building, just from single applicants. And sometimes I think in Planning and Development Services, we might stress too much on the big projects that we're working on. Tax increment financing, the marketing, the public property redevelopment. And sometimes we forget that maybe half or more of our time is actually spent just day-to-day, meeting with people that are looking to open a new business, expand their existing business, or relocate their business. There are a couple, you know, one planner on staff who really doesn't work at all on long-range planning. All it is, is applications, going through the process. And it's not just meeting with a planner once, it's meeting with planners, meeting with economic development, talking about incentives, figuring out the process, pulling Kevin and his staff in, what do they have to do from a building permit and plan construction standpoint? It's a lot easier when we deal with professional developers. Most folks that own a small to moderate-sized business, they haven't done this before or want to start a business. So, each time, it's an educational process for us. So, a substantial amount of time is spent on that. And I don't know if I stress that enough when I do talk to the council. Sometimes we get, again, so focused on some of those long-range projects that we forget about the everyday work that takes up a substantial amount of our time. So, construction, as well as the marketing, I did want to talk about some of those long-range projects. So, Councilor Morton had mentioned tax increment financing. That's a big-picture, long-range project. We have gone over the policy for tax increment financing. We hope sometime in the next month to bring that policy, once it's been tightened up just a little bit more, to the council for discussion, consideration, and potentially for adoption. We still have to finalize the two master plans that we'll be looking at. One at the intersection of 184 and 117, and the other one down on Route 1 in downtown Groton. So, by the next month or two, we'll see a lot more happening with the tax increment financing. So, again, very, very exciting. Some other things that I know the council's been concerned about, the zoning regulatory revisions. Tomorrow night, we'll be meeting with the zoning commission to discuss setting some priorities to get some of the more critical, lower-hanging fruit on those regulations done first, so that, again, we can send a clear message to the development community about that we're serious about getting these regulations adopted in as efficient of a way as possible. As well as the, I think we told the council, the Sealy School, the rezoning for that was passed by the zoning commission, very exciting for that. Something we've been spending a fair amount of time on still is the conversion of the merit properties, so that we can have the town build the school up at the top of the hill here. That's something that we're still continuing to work with Deep on. We're in the, in the final stages of it, but we're still not quite there. The joint land use study that the COG initiated, working with the base and some of the surrounding municipalities, we're getting into the final stretches of that. I think sometime later this month will be one, if not, one of two of the last couple of meetings on that project. Staff has been very involved in that, looking at compatibility of uses between the base and the surrounding municipalities, and some of the things that we can all do to work together. Also, as we're starting up budget time, we're beginning on the capital improvement plan, so you'll be hearing more about that soon, as, you know, we're still figuring out last year's budget or the current year's budget. We're already starting to think about the next, as well as a few other long-range projects that we've been looking at. The Thomas Road multi-use path is something that we're still working on, trying to get those easements together. Again, working with the manager's office and then the design of that project that's been out there for a really long time. From an economic development standpoint, just to kind of tie things up with a nice bow, we did talk about the website and the marketing. Again, the logo and branding, I think we'll be bringing something to the council to the end of, towards the end of this month, unveiling the final brand and logo that was decided upon. It came out really great. The Groton Aviation Day, staff attended a couple of weeks back and had a booth there showing off some of the things that we're trying to do to market in Groton. As far as some grants that have been really exciting, we did receive a Community Development Block grant for $800,000 this year. This is, three out of the last four years, we've received an $800,000 CDBG grant. This one is for Mystic River Homes, right down in the Noah area. Really exciting. That's a housing area that, development that needed that assistance, so we're very excited about that project. I think a number of you have been hearing about the, the next Innovation Places, the TRIP, the state larger project. We're one of four municipalities across the state selected for that multi-year project. Entails a $900,000 grant award, looking at starting consortiums to try to get more businesses surrounding the defense industry, startups, a number of things going on between Thame Street in the city of Groton, as well as areas in New London. So, there's a lot of initiatives that are happening with that. Again, a very exciting project. As well as, we are waiting to hear back on the final word, but we were initially awarded a $730,000 grant for the Nautilus Dock Extension. So, that was something that planning staff, working with our engineering department, had worked on. And again, we've been spending a lot of time on the public property redevelopment, as well as, this past month, staff interacted with about 42 business inquiries, just reaching out on a, this month basis, of people looking to locate here, interested in properties in Groton. So, every day, we're getting contacted by people. So, that's kind of a nutshell of where things are right now. Happy to answer any specific questions about any particular topics.
Dean?
The airport zone that we were granted, is that right?
Yes.
What's happening there? Is anybody taking advantage of that?
No one yet. Actually, if you look in your packet, there's actually a flyer that we did for the Airport Development Zone. That's something that we're still working with the state. They're actually trying to create a guidance document on how to use it, and they were looking to us to have them help write it, which, it's a state program. You'd think that they would know how to run their own program. But with that said, we haven't had anyone, to my knowledge, take advantage of it yet, but it's something that is another incentive that is out there.
The businesses that are in that zone, though, have they been notified that this is available?
I'm not sure if each, if we've reached out to each individual business. It has more to do with business expansion, but it's something that I know just very recently went effective. We had to send final maps for recording up to the state, so
I know.
That's something that's certainly on our radar, to let everybody know of all of these incentives. That's, again, a problem that we identified. Three years ago, the town had zero marketing material, zero programming on what our incentives were, guidance documents on the stuff. So, a lot of the, the programs that we had, great programs, but there wasn't great word getting it out there. So, right now, we're trying to attack very many things at once, as far as the marketing, the incentives, getting these programs out there. But that's certainly on our radar of something to do very soon, is getting notification out to the business owners in the ADZ, so they know of the benefit.
It's been what, at least six months, right?
It, I don't know if it's been actually effective for that long because of some state requirements that had to be finalized with it. But it's been somewhere in that ballpark.
All right. I have one other question. The Route 184 and 117, is that what you're gonna talk to us in the next few weeks?
No.
Of the development in that area?
That's something different. So, that, that development at 184 and 117, we haven't received an application for that yet. That's a developer that was interested in the tax increment financing.
Yeah.
What we wanted to speak to you about was, I want to say, maybe a year ago, and again, maybe six months ago, we gave you an update on some properties that the town had issued an RFP for. 517 and 529 Gold Star Highway property that we own, and how we're disposing or selling off of that publicly-owned property. So, that we'll be talking to an executive session about soon.
Okay. Thank you.
Dean?
So, we're helping the state, advising the state on how to, I'm thinking of a fee around $17 million for that. Small, small, small.
Sounds good.
Question I have is this, it's, and you're very, you may already be plugged into all this. It so happens that Mystic, what, the area that's known as Mystic straddles town, to the town boundary between Groton and Stonington. And I know, for example, that Pocatuck and Westerly, two different states, if you, people there think of it as sort of one community, it's even more the case with Mystic. And when visitors come to Mystic, they don't make any distinction at all. It's all Mystic. And we have people who have businesses on both sides of the river. And I'm thinking most recently, Grass and Bone, what opened up, I keep calling it the best-eaten property, but Wide World of Bagels, that location in there. So, that's just opened up, that butcher, butcher place has opened up. That's run, owned by people who also have businesses in Groton. Do we cooperate or liaise at all with, you know, with our counterparts in Stonington? Because what's good for them should be good for us as well. So, I don't see a boundary in terms of economic development. I'd rather have the place open up on the Groton side, but if it opens up on the Stonington side, it isn't a total loss. So, do we cooperate at all with Stonington, with respect to Mystic?
Yes, we do talk to Jason Vincent, the planning director there, on projects that happen on both sides. There was a, long-term, we've looked at and done analyses, looking at traffic patterns. Recently, we had done some Recently, we had done something looking at parking in Mystic, and when our staff looked in and started counting how much parking is available, we didn't look just at Groton. We looked at what's available in Stonington. And that's something that we're going to be bringing to the Planning Commission, I believe sometime in the next month, giving them an update on what did we learn, what do we need to do? So, yes, there's, we cooperate as much as we possibly can, we try to communicate with them. And, again, it's, we have so much staff, so much time.
Right.
We try to put our, where are we going to get the best bang for the buck? Things have been happening very well in Mystic, very organically. It's been turning over and becoming more of a destination as a restaurant hub. Long-term, do we probably need to look at, how can we better manage parking down there? Yes, I think that's something that we, as a town or the towns, will end up looking at. I don't know what the end solution is.
Richard?
Our industrial parks.
Are we promoting those, too? I didn't see anything in the package here.
So which industrial parks?
The airport industrial park, and then the executive industrial park over by the Mystic Marriott.
Those are areas that we certainly talk to when folks are looking for developable property. A lot of what people are looking for nowadays aren't vacant sites for industrial, they're looking for the building that's already up. It's incredible how much interest there is out there for the 10, the 20, the 30,000 square foot steel building with, you know, no columns in it. And unfortunately, there aren't any of those available that are vacant. So that's something we're constantly talking to developers about, that businesses want these. We don't see people building them on spec. We do have some new building happening in the airport industrial park, so that's something, I think, was it Mystic Cheese and, I can't tell you the name of it, hold on a second Beard and Mystic Cheese is going to be locating on that, on Leonard Drive, a new building that's going to be constructed there.
I understand a hotel is going to be built out there at the airport.
That's news to me.
John, did you say Beard?
Beard. B-E-E-R-D.
The beer. Aren't they in Stonington, too?
Yes.
So they're going to open up another restaurant out by the airport?
I'm not sure if it's, I think they might be more doing brewing there. I don't know if they'll really have much of a restaurant there.
And the, you talked about the traffic or parking study, is that what those, those, were across the road down in Mystic, there's, there's, you know, wires across the street, they're counting cars and...
That was not anything that my office was doing. This was a visual study that we started about a year ago, literally going, looking at GIS-based mapping, but not doing traffic counts with the rubberized tubing in the road.
Gotcha. And then the other thing I had, question was, the list that you read off at the beginning is kind of like great, you know, the number, is that, because you've never come to us with that list before, is that normal activity? Is it, has it ramped up? You know, since you got here, John, has it really, you know, has it ramped up and been better? I mean, you know, how, is that...
We've seen a consistent flow of new restaurants, especially in Mystic. It's been amazing through there, and I think we've seen a good stream of redevelopment in the downtown Groton area.
Mm-hmm.
Are things picking up? I think from a restaurant perspective, yes, we're seeing more and more of that.
But like in every day, like when you talk about the U-Haul facility, and like that's just normal every day, some come, some go, it's...
Yeah, I mean, that was a new site that was cleared, so we are seeing new construction on sites that had not previously been utilized. So that's, that's one good indicator, and then when we see sites that might not be quite up to snuff, or if there were vacant sites that had been developed before, getting revitalized. That's always a good indicator, as well as when people are doing facade improvements. So I think we're seeing more reinvestment than we've seen in some time within the community. I try to give an indication of, it's not just, hey, here's a planning project, or here's an economic development initiative, but also, yeah, here are things that are under construction. What's always a good indicator, although I don't know if we necessarily, in our yearly budget, break it out from a commercial or residential standpoint, but the amount of fees that we're bringing in, in each year, the number, the amount of fees that we're bringing in has been going up. And we haven't raised our prices for our fees, so that's a good indicator to me that we're seeing more development happen.
Okay.
I think that kind of answers your question.
Yeah.
Karen?
John, what is the status on the sandlot development, the indoor volleyball thing on 184?
I can get back to you on that. The last I heard, it's still slowly moving forward.
Okay.
Thanks, John.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else there, Karen?
No.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Verge it.
(sound of door closing)